We'll call the Tuesday, September 27th Planning Commission meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Changes to the agenda?
No chairman.
A roll call, please.
Chairman Saylor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Helmer.
Here.
Commissioner Pruitt.
Here.
Commissioner Stop and Brink.
Here.
Public comments under Government Code 5495-4.3. Members of the audience may address the commission on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during the commission's consideration of the item. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting on non-agenda items. If anybody want to make a citizen comment? We didn't get anything in writing?
No, we did not receive anything in writing.
Okay, we do not have anything on the information and consent calendar. We have three public hearings tonight. The first public hearing, Planning Commission consideration of a site plan review, environmental determination and master sign program with variance, land use applications, CDA 22-01, division of an existing commercial building into five tenant spaces and construction of a 30-foot center identification sign located at 25 West Polk Street.
Well, thank you for summarizing everything. The chairman, anybody have any?
There we go.
No, tonight, staff receiving application for the redevelopment of the old Kmart building. And so with this application, as the chairman identified in the subject was the current actions that the commission will be taking tonight related to this application. On August 29th, the city received an application for site plan review, environmental review, master sign program and variance for the modification and remodel of the existing 100,000, roughly 100,000 square foot retail building at 25 West Polk, which we all know as the old Kmart building, including the approval of a new multi-tenant pylon sign and variance related to the sign height. So in accordance to the Plan and Zoning Code, a site plan review is required for any and all additions to non-residential buildings that add or affect more than 50%. And with this being broken up into five tenant spaces, it triggers that site plan review. Once the application was deemed complete, staff requested comments from the necessary city departments, and this proposal incorporates the feedback from those departments. So the project consists of taking the existing 100,000 35-square-foot building and subdividing into five tenant spaces. The tenant spaces will include four vanilla shells and one shell with tenant improvements. Four of those spaces will be for future retail and one will be for future office use. Included will be the upgrades to exterior elevations of the building, including new facades, doors, parking lot improvements, modifications to hardscaping, sidewalk, landscape planners, and adding truck docks to the building. A subsequent conditional use permit will be submitted by the future tenant for the office space, as office space in the CR zoning designation requires the issuance of a CUP. As you can see, we ran it broke down, the different retail space and office space by square footage, so you can kind of see which each space is going to consist of. In addition to that site plan, the project includes an application for the approval of a master sign program for the project signage to establish a comprehensive and consistent signage guideline for the future tenants, for the divided buildings, including the two retail plads, including a variance for the new 30-foot pylon multi-tenant sign. So in terms of land use compliance, we always look to make sure that when we look at future uses or uses on a particular zoning designation to ensure that they're consistent with the general plan. And we have listed some goals and policies related to the general plan and consistency with retail development in terms of preserving the city's small-town character and neighborhood quality and long-term economic vitality of the community, retain, expand diversified business opportunities, attract new businesses to the city that are compatible with the community vision, and high-quality commercial development in the city that provides for the needs of the residents and encourage regional retail shopping as well. So in terms of the surrounding land use settings, we've got high-end city residential use to the south and to the west and east, we have existing retail centers, and then to the north, we have existing commercial as well. We've kind of identified, in terms of site plan review, what the findings of approval are for the site plan review. So there are four bulleted findings that we'll discuss at the end of the report in terms of making those findings made. In terms of the staff's analysis, when we look at the site plan review, we look at the structure and at the existing structure to be remodeled is 100,000 35 square feet and will be constructed in accordance with the California Building Standards, including all tenant spaces. In terms of access, access to the existing development will be via the existing driveways on Polk Street, Elm Avenue, and Forest. No new access points will be created as part of this application. The project has been conditioned to review the existing access points for compliance with the latest ADA requirements. And facilities included as part of the ADA path of travel that are not standard will be required to be upgraded to its current standard as well. All utilities are readily available for connection and upgrading to serve the development. And looking at parking, the existing site currently accommodates 385 parking spaces. The municipal code requires that when several uses occupy a single structure, the total required parking shall be the sum of the requirements for each use. So on the table below on the report, we identified the total parking required for the proposed project based on office, retail that's less than 10,000 square feet, and then retail that's 10,000 to 50,000 square feet, and then obviously the ADA accessibility requirements, which is the one per 25 required stalls. So with this development, the demand or the requirement for this development is 270 stalls is what's required, and we have 385 that are actually supported as of right now that are identified. There are areas, the parking lot has been deteriorated to a state of disrepair, and as a condition of approval, the applicant will be required to repair the surface of the parking lot, which would include some type of slurry material and restriping to city standards in those areas identified. Loading spaces inclusive of docks have been included in the project, which satisfies the onsite loading requirements of the code. There are existing refuge container enclosures for the future tenant space, and then any new refuge enclosure will need to be reviewed and approved by the city colinga's waste hauler, as well as the city engineer, in accordance with city standards. In terms of landscaping, there is current onsite landscaping around the perimeter of the site, as well as within the parking areas. The landscaping has gone to a little bit of a disrepair over the years, you know, the lack of watering and, you know, and basically it's just kind of got, so it'll need to be revitalized, both on the perimeter and within the parking areas. Landscape areas shall be of drought water-resistant plant material with decorative gravel and boulders, and there won't be any allowance of turf or grass in these locations, and then all landscaping shall be on drip irrigation. In terms of the additional parking requirement and landscaping, the parking areas will have to be landscaped in compliance with the Plan and Zoning Code, which will require a minimum of 10% of the parking lot to be landscaped. A lot of this is just going to be retooling a little bit of the parking areas, the islands they've got that currently have some landscaping, those have to be revitalized to ensure that they meet that 50% canopy and coverage of those existing parking spaces. For the most part, I think that'll be attainable with the existing infrastructure that's there. It's just a matter of them having to make sure they can meet that when they submit the final site plan. In terms of lighting, the existing lights in the parking lot of the property are required to be evaluated to determine they meet the requirements of the Plan and Zoning Code. The code does require that lighting shall not exceed .5-foot candles of illumination beyond the property, while additionally requiring parking areas have an average of one-half-foot candle illumination per square foot of parking area for visibility and security during hours of darkness. So as we move past the project site itself, in terms of the site plan, we look at the master sign program. And the purpose of the master sign program is to provide a method for an applicant to integrate the design and placement of signs within the project with the overall development design to achieve a more unified appearance. The MSP is required whenever five or more signs on a proposed building or a building or site with two or more tenants. In this case, there are five future wall signs and a multi-tenant pylon. The master sign program will also incorporate standards for future retail tenants to be located within the center, because as you know, there's two additional retail pads that are separate parcels that are on this site that will have future development, but at this time, we don't have any applications for future development, as those will be new builds, and so we'll be looking at separate site plan reviews for those particular properties. So staff provided a copy of the MSP and attached to the report for the commission's review. The MSP is broken into multiple sections from project overview, sign criterion for tenants, notice to the tenants and elevations of the proposed sign areas, and the shopping center identification sign. So the sign criteria that's identified in the MSP is consistent with that of the sign code, permitting a maximum of two signs per tenant frontage. At least one wall sign shall be permitted on any wall of a building which faces a public area, such as a street, mall, plaza, or parking lot, or upon a private parking lot, when such lot is built to the standards and the zoning ordinance, which clearly identifies the business name with minimal additional information. Window signage is not included under the maximum number of signs. The master sign program identifies the wall signage and window signage. Typical sign area in the CR zone district allows for one square foot of signage for every linear foot of building frontage up to a maximum of 200 square feet. The sign code also allows and includes specific limitations on wall signs. The maximum area of a wall sign is 100 square feet, or 15% of the building facade, whichever is less. However, due to the size of the shopping center, the size of the building and the building distance from arterial streets, an increase in area per tenant is warranted. Under Section 9-4506, under the general standards, all signs shall conform to the maximum area required, requirement specified in the code, unless different limits are approved under a master signage program, hence the submission and review of a master sign program. So staff provided a table in the staff, in the staff report that identifies kind of what the typical, the sign linear frontage is for each of the future tenants, and what the current code's allowable signage area is, and then what the proposed sign area or maximum area allowed under the master sign program, which consistently is around 50%, about a 50% increase from the standard signage that you would get on any other business, say on like Elm Avenue or other areas outside the downtown. Because in the downtown, it's a little bit smaller, I think it's a half-square-foot per linear foot. Anything outside the downtown is typically one square foot per linear foot. So staff feels that the MSP is a reasonable program, suitable for the type of large shopping center. We feel that the master sign program meets all the findings of approval, basically that the proposed signs are compatible in the style and character with any building in which the signs will be attached. Future tenants will be provided with adequate opportunities to construct, erect, or maintain a sign for identification, and directional signage in building and addressing is adequate for pedestrian and vehicular circulation and emergency vehicle access. So lastly is the proposed center identification sign with tenant signage. This requires a variance for the height of the sign. Our max height is 20 feet. However, based on the size of the shopping center and the location of the sign, the applicant has requested an increase of 10 feet to 30 feet in height for the center identification sign. The code does allow for a maximum pole sign of 20 feet, but since the height deviations are not permitted under a master sign program, a variance must be applied in order to permit a sign higher than 20 feet. So this is the similar, there's particular findings that have to be found with a variance, which is, one, there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings whereby the strict application of a title will deprive such property of privilege enjoyed by other property of the same classification in the same zoning district. Secondly, is such special circumstances were not by the owner or applicants, and the variance is not constituted a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such properties are located. So staff has provided the findings and the reasoning behind those findings to meet that criteria for the variance. And so lastly is the environmental consideration, and when reviewing this project, the project has been reviewed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and has been determined to be categorically exempt under Section 15301A and 15332 of the sequel guidelines regarding existing facilities and infill development projects in urban areas. So with that, that is my report on the item. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of those questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak for or against this. If you do so want to do that, please come to the lectern and state your name for the record. But as we wait for anybody, Commissioner Stop and Brink.
At this point, one question. Sean, on the signage, how does that compare to the signage that is in that shopping center with Starbucks and Big Five? What's the height on that sign?
I think it's close to 20 or maybe a little bit taller currently. So I think in terms of the shopping center, it's probably going to be taller than what's currently at the old, I guess, the old Save Mart shopping center. I mean, the parcel is a little bit smaller, and those tenants are set back a little further. However, it wouldn't prohibit them from submitting something for an upgraded sign or, you know, basically being able to look at something that's taller based on a variance. So when you compare it, I think along that stretch with that shopping center now having multiple tenant spaces, having that additional signage a little bit higher would be perfectly fine, I think, in that area.
And where would that pole be located?
It's going to be on the entrance on Polk Street. Basically, there's only one entrance off of Polk Street, so it'd just be as you, if you're going eastbound, right there on the, it'd be the, it'd be the north, northeast corner of the driveway.
Would the car stop there included on that pole?
I don't know if AutoZone was on that multi-tenant sign.
On the multi, on the...
Yeah, okay. I haven't looked at it in a while, so I think it...
They haven't decided to take us up on that.
Okay.
They'd have to agree, and then you'd have to work out the shopping center, so we're working, they may or may not be.
Because they've been under separate ownership for quite some time, so it was never really developed as one comprehensive shopping center at the time. So AutoZone, I think, may have been there after Kmart. I can't, I don't recall who came first, but it's basically five, four parcels there. And so the developer that's looking to update the Kmart building is purchasing the other two parcels as well, the vacant parcels.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners, staff. We're delighted to be here today. I'm now with the developer group, actually one of the tenants is looking forward to moving and investing in opening a new business in your town. We're really excited to see what happened today and being able to open a new business, a new grocery store here in town. So if you have any questions about the grocery store, I will be delighted to answer, but I'm here to support development, and hopefully we can get open a new business here. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is the grocery outlet, is that a brand name, or is this a discount grocery store?
Grocery outlet bargain market is the brand name, is the...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. I'm familiar with grocery outlet, and I know that they're independently owned and operated, right?
That is correct.
Do you own and operate other grocery outlets as well, or would this be your first?
So I'm actually now going to be the operator here in town. Usually somebody local, or they have roots in the community that we try to bring back to the community. My job for grocery outlet is entitlements manager, and I help facilitate between our needs, the developer needs, and the city to make sure that we have a functional store that complies with our needs and the independent operators' needs. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many employees are you going to hire?
Full-time, about between 40 to 45.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions? You don't have any? Commissioner Helmer.
Okay, what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of starting this process, and then when the stores will start finally being open?
Well, Frank and Dean from Cause Development are here, so they might be able to answer some of those questions. I know they're working on plans right now for TIs, but Frank, if you wanted to, do you mind coming up to the mic? Frank, thanks.
We planned on, we're working as fast as we can. There's a few, you know, things that we need to get tied up before moving forward. There's a big challenge right now with electrical power equipment that we're trying to bring together. We're going to start, you know, as soon as, with a demo to, you know, demo the interior space and all that stuff, probably with the next 30 days, and then soon after, then, you know, working on dividing, subdividing the spaces. And we'd love to be, our original estimate was to be completed with everything in January, February, but due to the, you know, the time delays for the equipment and things like that, we're probably looking at somewhere around May or June, whenever we can get that, you know, equipment to come in. So if we get it done sooner, we will, but, you know, we're, the supply chain and all that fun stuff is definitely put a delay on a lot of the stuff that we need, like HVAC, and really the power is the biggest thing. So we're working through it, but that's, you know, I wish I can give you like an exact date, but things are kind of fluid right now.
So in terms of the parking lot repair, how much, are you going to have to dig things up, or is it mostly covering stuff up? How much dust and debris is going to be...
Yeah, it's going to be minimal. We're not like, you know, redoing anything. It's more, you know, just resurfacing and slurry coat and, you know, try to keep that to a minimal.
Okay. And I noticed in the, somewhere in the documentation, that you will not be removing the trees that are there?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know what kind of trees those are? And are they really drought tolerant?
It will, it's going to depend. If they're alive, they'll probably stay, but if there's anything that's dead, they're going to have to be removed and replaced.
Right, but I was wondering, I mean, those were put in how many years ago when we weren't as concerned about, you know, drought tolerant plants and whatever? So I was just wondering if they, if they still were alive, but they were, you know, sucked a lot of water, were we looking at putting in something that would be more appropriate for climate conditions?
I'm not sure on the species of the trees. I mean, it's, I'm not really sure what the, how water-intensive the existing trees are.
Okay. Because as you know, I mean, water is important to everybody these days.
Right.
I just wanted to know what the landscaping would look like. And then are the businesses that are shown here, have they committed to coming here? Or are these, would be nice to have?
No, everything on the site plan is committed. We are, there's a process that you have to go through the leases, and with a big, complex project like this, we have these co-tenancy provisions, so one, they all have to be like compliant with each other, and all the restrictions and uses and all that stuff needs to be consistent. So all that's getting tied up now. We're in the final round of comments for the leases, and yeah, grocery outlet's probably going to be signed this week, and in the next couple of weeks, the rest of them will be executed. So they're all, and they're all pushing to go, so those are all firm commitments. We have one outstanding tenant, which was a county office that we're working through, and hopefully we'll get that one done. It'll be completely full center.
And then I noticed, not as part of this, but as part of the signage, that it shows a Chipotle and a Dutch Bros?
Yes.
Are those potential, or are those...
Chipotle is, we're negotiating right now. That may or may not happen, but Dutch Bros is committed. They've signed an LOI, and we have a lease that's in negotiation, so those are going to happen a little bit later than that development. Ground up takes a lot, a lot, lot more time than the, just putting the tenants in an existing building, but Dutch Bros for sure.
That will make a lot of people happy.
Bank account, not my bank account.
And then my last question for you, Sean. I noticed there wasn't, at least I missed if there was, the usual fire department comments on this proposal. I noticed that there were attached to one of the other projects that we're looking at, but I didn't see there...
I don't think we had any formal ones related to this because of being a rehab project. There wasn't anything formally submitted from the fire department.
Okay. And you did not get any public, any, from, comments from...
No, I didn't receive any written comments, no.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Jacobs, do you have anything?
Do we, I should know this question, I'm sorry. Is there a list of drought tolerant plants that a developer can go and say, oh, this plant will work, or this one won't?
We have a, we have a tree list. It probably needs to be updated, but we have established a tree list a while ago in terms of permitted trees for onsite or like street trees.
For the general public too?
Yeah.
Then that, it's probably, it looked like that building was about 100,000 square feet and then what we got broken down is about 95,000. Is there another 5,000 foot of space that's mechanical or something that's not being used on that?
Or is the 5,000 square feet like the outside garden center that's technically walled in? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, that was another, and have these businesses worked together before like this? So this has, this has been modeled?
Yeah, they're used to being similar, yeah. They're able to see a lot of it. That's why it's a little bit, in some situations when tenants don't work well together, like you can't put a gro, you know, like a Dollar Tree and a Dollar General together.
Yeah.
Obviously. So yeah, if you, if they didn't, it would be really hard to put it, it's already hard enough to get them to agree.
That was my thought, yeah.
But, and Ross seems to be like the most challenging tenant, you know, they have the most restrictions and things like that, so.
Basically, you got to take this building and put four different services in for each building and split up the water and all.
Right, yeah.
So yeah, I understand what you're going through and then AC units and so forth.
Yep.
Yeah, you got a lot of work ahead of you.
Yeah, no doubt.
Anything further?
I have a question. You had mentioned something about electrical. Is PG&E holding you up at all or is this all stuff not related to PG&E?
Well, PG&E has been a challenge, but we, we've gotten through, I think we've gotten through that. They, they were pushing for us to upgrade the transformer and, you know, we pushed back. We have all the requirements met for what the thresholds are, so that has been taken care of. But they've been really trying to push us to, and if we were to do that, it wouldn't, the project couldn't work because it would, number one, it'd be too expensive. It would push, I mean, you couldn't even get a transformer probably for two years. And then it's really the equipment. So the equipment that you use to, that basically sub, you know, subdivides the power and gives the metering to each tenant, that equipment in a lot of cases is like 50 to 55 weeks out. We've, we had, we'd already ordered gear that's supposedly coming in 20 weeks. And, you know, it's a big challenge right now for, I mean, every developer is running into the same issues and hopefully that 20 weeks is accurate because I've heard sometimes they, they still push it out. So we're also looking at alternative solutions so we can open without having that gear. The tenants are very receptive of that, so we'll all have an alternate plan just in case that, that falls through. But hopefully everything goes smooth and we get it in the time when they promised.
Would you be putting solar up on the...
No, no, not, no.
Commissioner Stoppinbrink.
Okay, there's one thing we all know about trees. If you don't water them, they're going to die. So is there any technology out there that would allow us, you to do artificial trees? That you can have, you know, have them be 30 feet tall with a nice umbrella that are going to survive the elements?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could probably come up with a solution for that, but with the way the construction and the costs of the project, we're, we're trying to work within, you know, what we have and trying not to do too much outside of, you know, more expenses. I mean, we're, the construction's gone up pretty significantly, you know, 30, 40% within the last year. So we're trying to work as best as we can with what we have and maintain it as best as we can.
Related to the trees, those are trees that are already being watered currently, right? So it's not adding any additional water usage over what we're already doing?
Correct.
Okay.
Does your company, does your company own the former Delano Kmart by chance?
No, we don't.
Okay.
That, actually the guy that we're buying the property from owns that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, it's...
Okay, okay. That was just a curiosity because one of these tenants has moved into part of that, so I was just curious. As far as the suite number four, which I believe is the 8,500 square foot one, looking at the, at the plan on it, I see there's loading docks for suite one, two, and three and then four, which I believe is supposed to be the five below. Are they just planning on using like their front entrance or I see there's a side door for their receiving after hours?
Right, yeah, it'll be on the side. There'll be a little area for them to load on that backside door on the side of the building.
Okay, perfectly. And then what are you, what are you going to make them do with that large area, like where their master sign will go? I mean, that, it all used to be turf. Are you going to allow them to...
Well, that's the separate parcels, so that'll be, that'll be developed separately.
Okay, that's the part that's being developed separately, okay.
So they're coming, coming right off, they'll be putting the sign right off of that parcel in that area.
Okay, that, okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience have any further comments? We will go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Does anybody else have any need for further discussion? Commission, the chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
Commissioner Pruitt made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
All second.
Commissioner Stoppinbrink made the second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoppinbrink?
Aye.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0. Moving on to the second public hearing tonight, approval of a conditional use permit for the grocery outlet at 25 West Polk Street for the approval of a beer, wine, and spirits license.
Thank you, Commissioner. Staff, tonight staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2204 by adopting resolution 022P-008 with conditions, which basically on September 12th, 2022, the community development department received a conditional use permit application for the sale of alcohol, beer, wine, and distilled spirits, a type 20 or type 21 ABC license at the proposed grocery outlet store located at 25 West Polk Street. Staff accepted the application on September 13 and began processing the application. The requirements of conditional use permits are intended to prevent problems associated with commercial establishments and the sale of alcohol for consumption onsite, which is on sale or off-premise, off-sale, and to prevent over-concentration. It's been demonstrated that such establishments can adversely affect nearby commercial or residential uses and can create substantial demands for police services, which is the purpose of the conditional use permit. However, staff has made the findings that that's not the case when it comes to this type of operation. So the property is located at the soon-to-be renovated retail center at 25 West Polk, which will soon be home to the grocery outlet and four other retailers. The sale of alcohol in the CR zoning district is permitted subject to a conditional use permit. So the issuance of the conditional use permit for the use is permitted and consistent with the general plan, land use goals and policies, and zoning regulations. So in terms of the operations, the sale of alcohol will be within the grocery store and beer, wine, and distilled spirits will be permitted to be sold on these premises according to the application. The applicant is proposing a type 20, which is a beer and wine, but under the permit would like to have the option of a type 21, should it come available. So they are allowed to obtain that license. These are licenses that contend 21s sometime, are usually on a lottery system and there's only so many that the county authorizes. And so at this time, there's none available, but they want to be able to have the option that if they do in fact come available and they have the ability to purchase it, that they would want to have the ability, not having to come back, to get that license for them to have spirits at the grocery store as well. So as you'll see in the resolution, it will allow for a type 20 or a type 21 to be authorized at this location. So in terms of surrounding uses, we've got to the north, commercial, to the south, residential, to the east, commercial, and to the west, commercial. Public hearing notices were sent out to all property owners within 300 feet of the site as required by local and state law and staff determined that this approval is not a project under SEQA as there will be no anticipated environmental impacts from the, from the, from this facility serving alcoholic beverages. And so reasons for the recommendation is that staff feels that the findings, the three findings regarding general plan consistency, neighborhood compatibility, and asset for the neighborhood is consistent and can be met. So with that, staff is recommending adoption of resolution 022P-008. So I'll ask, answer any questions if you have any questions.
Again, this is a public hearing. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing for anyone who wants to speak for or against this motion. Please.
Good evening again. I'm here for any questions and I also have on virtually our consultant that does this to help us out with applications for any technical questions. I'm here if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Stoppinbrink? Commissioner Pruitt?
Did you get any written comments?
No. Commissioner Helmer? Vice Chair Jacobs?
Just noted, said the store is going to be open no later than 11 o'clock. So that's seven days a week.
Correct.
So is it currently, is there's nothing, the city is saying alcohol consumption up now?
And again, those are hours depending how we operate. The owner may decide to close earlier, but you know, which is, come on and have the flexibility. Thank you.
The, I noticed on the applicant, the person who's going to be running this is the current owner of the property? Am I correct about that? Is it the same individual?
The IO, the independent operator for the store, is not yet public.
Oh, it's not?
Mm-mm. I don't know who that is yet.
That's just the property owner? Okay, that's just the property owner. That's why they put their name?
Yes, yeah, because it's applicant slash owner, so they're, they're the owner, yeah.
Usually we don't know that who is going to be the independent operator four months out from the opening, so most likely.
Oh, really? Okay.
They have to go through training, they have to go through abilities. We do train our independent operators and they have four months to go shadow another independent operator and learn how to operate their own store, so.
But generally speaking, each grocery outlet has a separate independent operator? You normally don't do...
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alrighty, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public? The chair will close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. If there's no need for any further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Pruitt made, seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoppinbrink?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
Aye.
Chairman Saylor?
I vote aye as well. Motion carries, 5-0. Moving right along, if I can get back up to the top quick enough. Do you have your front page? Mine's, it's being slow getting me your cover sheet. Hell of a cover sheet. I should, yes. How embarrassing of me. There we go. I got it. Perfect. Moving right along to the next planning, to the next hearing. Planning Commission, consideration of conditional use permit 22-02 and further adopting resolution number 022P-010 approving with conditions a commercial cannabis indoor cultivation facility located at 9900 Cody Street.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, tonight staff is recommending the planning commission adopt resolution 022P-010 with conditions, approving conditional use permit application 2202 for a current commercial cannabis cultivation facility located at 9900 Cody Street. On July 26, the community development department received a conditional use permit application for the development of an indoor cultivation facility within the existing structures located at 9900 Cody Street. In accordance to section 9-5128F of the Clean, Plan, and Zoning Code related to commercial cannabis operations, prior to or concurrently with applying for a regulatory permit, the applicant shall process a conditional use permit as required by the city's land use regulations. In addition, because of the modifications to the buildings, there is a requirement for a site plan as well, similar to our previous item that we had. And this application constitutes a project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff has prepared an environmental analysis as part of the land use application as well. So in terms of the site plan analysis, there are several development regulations that staff evaluates prior to recommending approval of a site plan review application. This site plan application has been reviewed for compliance with the Clean, Plan, and Zoning Code and meets all applicable requirements for the proposed use based on type, location, and constraints. So the applicant's proposing to remodel four existing structures at 9900 Cody Street totaling 18,468 square feet to support indoor commercial cannabis cultivation with up to 6,000 square feet of cultivation canopy. Building A is for basically the office and administrative use and buildings B, C, and D are for the cultivation and processing activities. The primary access point for the development will be via the multiple driveways on Cody Street and according to the fire department and the city engineer, there's adequate space onsite for public safety maneuvering. All utilities are readily available for connection on Cody Street and all utility connections shall be shown on the final site plan approved by the planning department and confirmed by the public works department. And then improvement plans will be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Public natural gas sewer and water facilities exist on this development and onsite storage retention currently exists onsite as well. There shall be meters for both water and natural gas, which will be identified on the final site plan when submitted to the planning department for final approval. There will be separate landscape and domestic meters in order to differentiate between landscape water and domestic water per city policy. Since this is a secure facility, the water meters shall be located outside any secured area and gas meters shall be placed in a location that are protected from damage. In terms of parking, table 4-4 of 9-4.302 require that industrial buildings for cannabis, one stall for every thousand square feet of building space, which requires 19 parking spaces. The proposed development has exceeded that requirement, providing 70 vehicle stalls, including three accessible spaces. In terms of refuse containers, the proposed site plan identifies a location for solid waste collection near the middle of the site and upon final site plan submission, the trash enclosure will be required to meet city standard for construction and available space for required receptacles. In terms of landscaping, the landscaping exceeds the city's minimum requirement for landscaped areas as it relates to site frontage, parking, highway setbacks, and equipment screening. A separate landscape plan will be submitted to the community development department for review and prior, and approval prior to the building permit issuance. The proposed project is located within 200 feet of the state highway and shall provide a landscape area of at least 15 feet deep between the highway right of way and any building or parking area for the length of the site frontage facing towards the highway. The applicant has provided the adequate setback from the state highway and will provide the required 215 gallon trees for every 25 feet of site frontage towards the highway. In terms of fencing, the facility is fenced with a combination of chain link fencing and razor wire, all existing dilapidated interior chain link fencing shall be replaced with new chain link fencing where permitted. All access points into the facility shall be equipped with access control measures to restrict unauthorized access and all fencing adjacent to public rights away would be a combination of wrought iron and landscaping or decorative block material. In terms of lighting, lighting's been reviewed and approved by the police department to ensure there will be no spillover lighting, including security camera coverage. In terms of signage, in accordance with the zoning regulations related to commercial cannabis, no business-related signage shall be provided except for those federally regulated, such as ADA and address signage. The applicant shall furnish and install off-site curb and gutter, driveway approaches, and 70-watt equal LED street lighting on Cody Street, on the Cody Street front edge is approved by the city engineer. The curb and gutter shall be designed to allow existing stormwater flows from the southeasterly curb return at Gale Avenue and Cody Street to continue through the new curb and gutter and connect to the existing curb and gutter to the south. This property does lie within the Zone A special flood hazard area inundated by the 100-year storm. The applicant shall be required to comply with all federal, state, and city regulations such as construction materials and methods, grading and excavation, and other applications with controlled development in flood-prone areas. This has been added as a condition of approval to comply with the applicable section of the Plan and Zoning Code related to flood, related to flood plain management. So as we look at the conditional use permit, staff does a separate analysis to look at operational criteria such as security, odor control, hours of operation. The regulatory permit reviewed by the police chief and approved by the city council will consider these items in more depth to ensure full compliance with the city and planning and zoning code. So in terms of the cultivations, as we've kind of gone through multiple applications in the past, cultivation means an activity involving the planting, grow- So in terms of the cultivations, as we've kind of gone through multiple applications in the past, cultivation means an activity involving the planting, growing. Harvesting, drying, curing, grading, and trimming of cannabis. In addition, a cultivation site means a location where commercial cannabis is planted, grown, harvested, dried, cured, graded, or trimmed. Or a lo, or a location where any combination of these activities occur. So the applicant plans to cultivate six thousand square feet of canopy of commercial cannabis with ancillary processing and administrative work areas within the facility. There will be several dedicated grow rooms with additional work rooms for drying, trimming, water testing, and nutrient storage, uh, which is basically your processing space. In addition to the grow rooms, there'll be several grow areas for seedlings as well as vegetative plants. According to the applicant's application documents, their products will be certified organic, eliminating the exposure to synthetic fertilizers. The applicant will be utilizing both hydroponic grow systems as well as traditional soil-based systems. The facility will be equipped with the proper ventilation to ensure that smell of cannabis does not emanate beyond the property. The applicant will be required to obtain a state California cultivation license applicable to the city's approved permit. In addition to meeting all the regulations adopted by the California Bureau of Cannabis Control. This property is, has a land use designation, um, of MB, which is manufacturing and business with a zoning designation of manufacturing and business light. Where this project proposal is consistent with the general plan and zoning designations for commercial, uh, for cannabis uses. Uh, this property is located at ninety-nine hundred Cody Street. Um, as you may all know, it's the former West Hills College District Office property. In terms of security, the security, the applicant's site protection strategy will address all forms of security concerns and will be required to meet all the security requirements. Of the Plan and Zoning Code as it relates to commercial cannabis activities. In terms of building access, all, all employees and authorized personnel will enter the buildings as designated entry, at designated entry areas after checking with security personnel. At the site entrances who will grant authorization into the facility. Terms of odor control, in order to control odor while producing at the above capacity and remaining compliant, the facilities will be equipped with both negative pressure and mass filtration systems. To control the odor at the site. The production facility is expected to operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with approximately, uh, ten to fifteen employees. As mentioned above, in the site plan analysis, the facility will be accommodated by seventy parking stalls as shown on the site plan. The applicant will be required to meet with the fire marshal and building official to determine the level of safety protection required based on the desired storage of solvents or any other hazardous materials onsite. The facility is expected to use approximately two hundred thousand gallons of water per year, which is less than one acre foot. Um, as you can see, I did the calculation of what one acre foot of water is, so it's about one-third of an acre foot, or two-thirds of an acre foot. In terms of wastewater disposal, the applicant will not introduce any toxic chemical waste or solvents into the local waste stream and will be required to disclose any products. Chemicals, solvents, active ingredients that will be used as part of the cultivation process. The cap, the applicant will utilize the City of Calinga's solid waste hall or mid-valley for all solid waste, including destroyed product, green waste. Typical solid waste and any other cannabis-related products or byproducts where the State of California has authorized franchise solid waste haulers to provide these, these services. In terms of public notification, uh, September fifteenth, public hearing notices were sent to all property owners within three hundred feet of the site as required by local and state law. And as of tonight, uh, staff has received no public comment or any written comments, um, from anybody that received notices. In terms of environmental review, um, since the proposed site is not expanding the footprint or existing, uh, and of the existing buildings and are permitted uses subject to the conditional use permit. The project has been determined to be exempt from CEQA in accordance with fifteen-three-oh-one A for existing facilities. So once the project is considered, a notice of exemption will be filed with Fresno County Clerk's Office once approval has been granted for the application. And lastly, um, under the reasons of recommendation, uh, as we've, as we do in all projects, there are findings that have to be met. Not only for the site plan, but also for the conditional use permit and staff feels that all of these findings that are listed here can be met. Based on the record of the report, as well as the resolution and the components in the application. So with that, um, I'll entertain the comments. That's my report.
Alrighty, this is a public hearing. We will go ahead and open the public hearing. For anybody wishing to speak for or against this motion, just come up to the lectern. As in previous hearings tonight, Commissioner Stop and Brink.
Yeah, I'm a little bit familiar with this property, so a few observations. Uh, number one, I noticed that the address you're using is ninety-nine hundred Cody Street, however. That building in front, which I'm assuming you're referring to as building A, uh, that's actually a ninety-eight hundred Cody Street address. According, so you may want to check your records at the city. Because that's all, those are always the two addresses we had out there. The buildings behind were all ninety-nine hundred Cody Street. And, uh, buildings, uh, B and C were the two modulators. And I'm not sure what you're calling D. Is that the modular to the east or is it the big warehouse to the back?
They're, I think they're identified on the site plan.
I opened that up, Sean, I couldn't really, I couldn't tell from that. Uh, maybe didn't open up large enough on my computer, but.
Yeah, I can, I can let you know. Let me see here. So building D is going to be the modulators probably on the farthest west portion of the, or the east, east, east side of the built, east side of the property.
Yeah, that was you, the old boardroom. Are all those other modulars still out there, I wonder? Not that it matters.
AJ is here. He can probably answer those questions. He's familiar with the site, um.
Uh, yes, building D we have is all the modular, modular like offices that they are attached together, except one of them, which is not attached. But we are going to use the whole four modular office we have as a building D. But they, they have their own like separate door, like each, each room has a separate door. For example, the first one, like D one, D two, D three, and D four is going to be separate room, but we're gonna assume that they're, they're like acting as a building D.
So you've taken all four of those modulators to the east and labeled it as D.
Exactly.
And then the two right behind the administration building, the permanent non-modular, those are B and C.
Those are just, those are B. So C is the one that's a little bit further south.
Yes.
Well, that's the, then that's the warehouse.
Is that the warehouse?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's building C.
That's building C, which is the shell, like a.
Yes, okay.
That's a prefabricated, that's a metal building, it's not.
I understand.
Correct.
Thank you. The only thing I caution Sean is to make sure that the address we're using on this is correct.
Yeah, we'll double check that and when we issue the permit, we'll verify and make sure we have the correct address for those, uh, for that site. Yeah, thank you.
I have a few questions. First one is the ongoing PG&E question. What, what's your PG&E condition with this project?
Like the, the other developers said that right now dealing with PG&E is really hard. If you wanna, we have to upgrade our transformers, which it takes about like fifty to fifty-five weeks if you order it today. And then the other thing, there's a shortage on power in north side of Calinga because of the, something going on, I don't know, because we have other project that we are waiting for the power. We were supposed to have power, but. For some reason, they put hold on us and then we're not going to have it until two thou, May two thousand twenty-three. It's hard, but by the time that we, we put the request, we sent the request to PG&E, we're, I'm, I'm in touch with Mr. Rob Howard, which is in charge with the industrial power over there. We were doing back and forth and negotiate and see what's going to happen, but I would say. It takes about like at least May two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
In order to upgrade the power, because right now over there we have like, I think around like if I'm not wrong. Six hundred amps, something like that, which is in two transformer. One of them is underground and one of them is overhead. It's because there's two.
Yeah.
Uh, a parcel number over there. It's, it's a little, little bit hard.
Yeah. We're, we're familiar with PG&E being difficult, so that's why, that's why I asked and everyone's situation is a little bit different, so.
And with this situation right now, it's really hard for us because the, uh, you know, if you want to use the gen, a natural, like a nat, we cannot use a natural, uh, gas generator. And we're not able to use the, like an diesel generator because of the prices for the, so we have to wait until the PG&E release the power. And to north side of the Calinga.
Yeah. And then my next question is about how many employees do you think you'll have?
Uh, we were thinking about ten to fifteen or maybe fifteen to twenty, depends. Uh, if you want to run the whole thing, yes, we're gonna need like a, around maybe approximately twenty with this situation.
Okay, um, another question about how much in taxes are you expecting to pay to the City of Calinga?
Whatever is like we have to pay.
Okay. No, I know, but like, like, you know, like around what do you think that's?
I think Sean would, Mr. Sean knows better than that.
It's been a long time since I've calculated, I just have to even.
Fifteen million or something like that?
What I know, what I know is the city is seven dollar per canopy square feet.
No, it's, it's been, it's been reduced since then. It's been, it's been reduced. I think it's.
So then that's what that's for like a couple of months ago.
I, you know what, guys, I have to double check.
I know it.
I'll, I'll look it up.
It changed and.
It did. It's changed recently and. I haven't had to delve in that in a while, so.
Okay, and then another sort of mathematical sort of thing is we're all worried about the water. And in the past, before we were in such a water crunch, the, the concern has been whenever anything cannabis-related has been passed, it's the water usage. I'm assuming and you can confirm or deny that you're going to be using all of the recycled water and stuff like that to keep it as low as possible. But I'm curious, and this is a question that I don't think we've ever asked anybody. How does a cannabis facility, the size of the one that you're proposing? How much water usage do you use in comparison to say? An average size, three-bedroom home with a typical family in it?
Well, a typical house will use about an acre foot a year. It's about three hundred thousand gallons.
So what?
So it'd be less. It's about, it's about two-thirds of a house.
So this is less than one house usage and providing fifteen-ish jobs and tax revenue? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Helmer.
Okay, in addition to water, um, we're also, you know, interested in electrical usage. And I know, once you get beyond the issues with PG&E about getting your transformer and getting set up. What kind of electrical, ongoing electrical, um, load would you be envisioning when it's fully up and running?
I think, uh, we will need, you mean like as far as ampere is that, what, how many ampere we need, like amp we need? Uh, it'll be around like, I would say, uh, with, with the LED light, if we go twelve hours, twelve hours, because. We're not going to run the whole thing at the same time for all the facility that I'm working is like this, because it's, it's not, you know, good for the facility.
Okay.
You're going to use a lot of, we're going to use twelve hours, twelve hours, and I'm assuming maybe a thousand amp for the whole facility for this size of canopy. Because we need a lot of AC, you know?
Yeah. Okay, and then odor control. I know early on we used to focus on that quite a bit and, um, I, I, what kind of, what kind of systems are you going to have in place? Because I do know that sometimes going out of town, passing the existing facilities, um, you really, really smell it.
So this is an interesting concept because with the outdoor cultivation being permitted in the industrial area. This is in an area where they're directly next door to outdoor. And so the council hasn't set a policy, basically stating if you're this far away from residential, if you're even, if you're involved in cannabis operation, that they don't necessarily have to. Have the, we have, that they don't have to have the odor control. But the reality is, is that, you know, you may or may not smell it. Because if they're growing next door outside and you can smell it from the highway. Um, you're not going to know whether it's them or whether it's this applicant. So there is going to be some. We do have the requirement still for indoor cultivation because outdoors is the only one that has that mile radius and basically it's inherent that if you're outdoors, you can't mask the smell. So it's kind of a unique situation having cannabis operators in this area of the community because they're not near residences. And they are that distance away where, you know, it's, we have the requirement, but it's going to be very difficult to enforce. Because you're going to have those adjacent growers.
My concern though is that it's right next door to the farm of the future. And I know that they do a lot of activities with, with students. And I know that they're planning on expanding their activities with high school students, bringing kids out there. And I'm, I'm just kind of wondering about the, the atmosphere that that additional scent will make for, you know, kids that we're bringing out there for educational opportunities.
Well, it's already out there because the out, the outdoor grow is actually at the old Claremont facility, which is even, which shares a property line with, with the college.
What this was going to do to that.
But other than that, we're going to re-insulate all, uh, all the walls, like exterior walls, and we're going to keep everything inside. Plus that the air conditioning that working in, inside that, we're going to have the, some sort of the vacuum to take all the, like odor from inside the rooms and put it back in, into the AC. So it's going to circulate it inside the room. So we're gonna, we can control it like at least like maximum for ninety percent of it. With the insulation and everything, but like Mr. Sean said, over there right now, we have an outdoor facility going on and right now, if you're going to through that street, you can smell it. But what it's.
Address it with other operators and really it is just the cleaning and scrubbing the, the filters. So, I mean, the odor does get through, but when you address it with making sure that they're maintaining filters, then typically that odor does, you know, stay away.
I mean, not that kids don't know what it smells like and whatever, but.
Yeah.
You know, I just. And then do, does your, uh, operation have other cannabis-related businesses in town?
Yes, the next lot next to it.
Okay.
That one is for Dosie Ranch as well.
And what do you do there? Is that manufacturing or growing or?
And that facility nine eight four zero, which I got, uh, approval, uh, eight, eight, nine, ten months ago, I think.
That's what I thought.
Yes, we're doing, uh, manufacturing, cultivation over there and distribution, but over here, we're just doing the cultivation.
Now, will there be transportation between those two facilities? Will you be cultivating here and taking it over to the other operation?
If you want to do it, we gotta do it with the license, like we gotta do it in between the license.
That's not the intention at this point.
Yes, that's, that's illegal.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
And just to answer your questions, sir, it's forty-two thousand dollars in, in taxes. So it's seven dollars a square foot up to twenty thousand square feet, so times a six thou, and it's just canopy, so it's six thousand, so forty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then just the licensing fee, the annual licensing fee.
So you own that property just south of Cody that you're putting that brick, uh, up against, I mean, building around?
Pardon me, sorry.
Is that your building there you're putting up just south of the property we're talking about tonight?
Yes, the one that we put the wall in, uh.
The walls going up right now?
The retaining wall and the wall, yes, that's what, it's not, I'm a developer, so it's not my facility.
I understand.
I'm a general contractor and the manager of these projects, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Jacobs?
I have no question.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Any, any other questions? Did you have any other comments?
No, thank you so much.
Yes.
You got a comment?
Ri, Richard Hill.
Yes, Richard Hill. I mean, I know you guys are going to pass this thing no matter what, but you know, I'm also one who's considering, you know, you know, thinking about the water deal. The city's told me to let my yard die, let my plants die, let my neighbor's yard die, let everybody's yard die. But yet you want to give this marijuana place the water he needs to grow his plants and cultivate and. Maybe he's got flowers in there he'll plant and, and grow too, I don't know. So you're telling the citizens of this community that we're going to give this guy an acre foot of water. But you can't grow nothing. You can't let, you can't water your yard. I think that's, uh, unfair to the citizens. And I don't think that we really need another marijuana place in town. We already got enough growing. Unless we are bound determined to put a sign out in front of our.
Unless we are bound and determined to put a sign out in front of our community, marijuana capital of California. But right now, if you're gonna give these people all the water they need, I'm gonna tell you what, you better come to my house, 'cause you can go ahead and find me if you want. I'm gonna start watering my yard. I'm gonna use an acre foot of water too. If you're gonna give an acre foot away, by God, I'm gonna use an acre foot of water too. And I'm gonna tell everybody that you people think it's our right to give acre foot of water away, they should go ahead and do it too. If you approve this plan for this grow, then that means you're saying it's okay to give water away. And don't, don't find me for using my acre foot of water 'cause I'm just as entitled as he is, 'cause I'm from this community and I'm vested in this community. I've had business in this community, and I know some other business people are hurting because you people are taking the water away. So you go ahead and give this water away, and let's see how the citizens feel about it. 'Cause I guarantee you, they're gonna find out. 'Cause I'm gonna let them know that you're gonna give us water away. And let's see how happy they are with your decision to give water away. How you doing? I haven't seen you for a while.
Thank you, thank you. If there's no other further comments, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. If there's no need for further discussion among the commission, the chair will entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
Commissioner Helmer made the motion to approve. Does the motion have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Pruitt made the second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Helmer?
Aye.
Commissioner Pruitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stop and Brink?
No.
Vice Chairman Jacobs?
No.
Chairman Saylor?
No.
Resolution did not pass, three to two. Moving right along to staff department reports.
I have none.
Staff comments. Commissioner announcements.
We had a beautiful ribbon-cutting ceremony up in Fireball this afternoon for the brand-new college, fifty thousand square feet, fifty million dollar building, of which the citizens in Fireball passed a bond fourteen years ago. They finally got their building. The match from that bond was a million dollars on a fifty million dollar building. We used money for other things as well, to purchase properties, demolish houses and things like that to make the footprint. But it's an, it gives you an idea of the leverage that can be used with local tax money and the match from the state. I know it's not Colinga, but it, it is attached to the Colinga College. They're in charge of that operation up there in Fireball. And you just drive down that street and see this beautiful, brand-new building, so...
Where is it located at?
It's right on Ninth and O Street. So if you go through the main part of town and turn right on Ninth, you'll just be staring at the front of the building. You ought, I encourage you to go by and take a look at it. It's, it's just a magnificent building for that community up there.
Thank you. Anyone else have announcements? Commissioner Helmer?
No, I would just like to say, Mr. Hill, I really appreciate you coming here and sharing your, your thoughts with us. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the council, you know, shooting that down. You two people play this, a fair exchange of pay to just grow as much marijuana as you want.
I, I just, I just appreciate you coming and voicing your concerns. And I appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
Yes.
Just a question, are we having a meeting on the eighth, do you know?
I don't know if we have anything that's gonna go the eighth. Probably not. Yeah.
Alrighty, well with that, meeting adjourned.